Okay, we're good to go. If I can get a mover and a second, please, to open the meeting. Moved by councillor Ted Chenman, second by councillor Peter Kissmaker. Be it resolved that we do call this regular meeting of council to order on Wednesday, February 7th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried. And I'll hand it over to Deputy Mayor Peter Kissmaker.
The council, the corporation, the township of Horn Payne would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging the land on which we gather here today is the Treaty 9, 1905 slash 1906 territory and traditional lands of indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect in this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples?
Thank you, Peter. Moving on to item three is review and note any changes to the agenda. We don't have any changes presented. So if I can get a mover and a second, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stanis, second by councillor Blinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. Those in favor? And that is carried. Item number five is Declaration of Superior Interest, Declaration of Conflict Interest. You can do that, council, at any time through the meeting. I don't have anything to work right now. Moving on to item number six, Adoption of the Minutes. If I can get a mover and a second for the January 10th regular meeting. Moved by councillor Blinda Kissmaker, second by councillor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved that the council of corporations, the township of Horn Payne does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, as distributed? Any comment or note to those minutes? There being none. Those in favor? And that is carried. Item number 6.2 is the regular meeting of January 24th. If I can get a mover and a second, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved that council, the corporation, the township of Horn Payne does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, as distributed? Any comment on those minutes? Those in favor? And that is carried. And the last set of minutes is our special meeting for January 31st. If I can get a mover and a second. Moved by councillor Drago Stanis, second by councillor Blinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council, the corporation, the township of Horn Payne does hereby adopt the minutes of special meeting of council held on Wednesday, January 31st, 2024, as distributed? Any comment on those minutes? There being none. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving right into item seven is business arising from the minutes. And this was, we had discussed about giving Kidsport some time on our board out there. So the staff looked into that. Do we use the same mover and a second from our original motion on this? No? Okay. If I can get a mover and a second. Moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Blinda Kissmaker. Whereas through resolution number 2024, 25, the council of corporations, the township of Horn Payne authorized a donation of $200 to Kidsports for the 2024 Northern Ontario Fish Derby for mental health at the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, January 24th, 2024. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of corporations, the township of Horn Payne does hereby agree to an in-kind additional in-kind donation to Kidsports to use the outdoor sign for two weeks at the municipal office to advertise the 2024 Northern Ontario Fish Derby for mental health. And those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on tonight. It's pretty exciting in Horn Payne. We do have a presentation and this is long coming in Horn Payne because we've done all our different planning and now we're on to rebranding. So I want to welcome cinnamon toast to our meeting. And Andrea Dreyer and Myra Boar, Bird, sorry, are going to be our presenters tonight. Welcome to Horn Payne virtually.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so the floor is yours and you can start off with your presentation and we'll wait for questions to land.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, good evening. Thank you, everyone, very much for your time this evening. We're going to be walking you through a little bit of the work that we've been doing on the brand and get to show you some of the concepts that we've come up with in collaboration with the team at Horn Payne. So first I wanted to kind of set the stage a little bit with what a brand is not. So a brand is not just a logo. It's not just a product. It's not just a service. So that's a common misconception in and around branding work and it's actually much more than that. So a brand is an emotional connection to hopefully your community. So we're really trying to not just build a visual identity, but an entire infrastructure around that. So this evening you're going to see not just some of the logo concepts, but you're also going to see a lot of work around the content, around the framing of the brand and the positioning of the township of Horn Payne. So what we're really hoping to do with our good brand is inspire the trust in your community, make your residents very proud, bring people to your community and, you know, really make it a place that is, if people are proud to live and people are proud to visit. So for this project specifically, we had a few kind of key objectives that we started with. So we really wanted to revitalize Horn Payne's image and we wanted to create kind of that welcoming ambiance that we actually have already heard from your residents that you have and really highlight that. Bringing investment, business ownership and development to Horn Payne. Really create your township as a place for long-term residents as well as to showcase, of course, your natural beauty and scenic landscape. So we went about doing this by actually speaking to individuals in your community. So we conducted a digital survey that was open to the general public. We also conducted a number of one-on-one interviews and focus groups as well. So obviously the people in your community know your community best. So we really wanted to base a lot of the work that we did off of what your community thinks of itself. And that's really where a lot of our findings have come from. So I'll turn it over to Andrea to walk you through some of the findings.
Awesome. Thanks, Myra. Yeah, so as Myra alluded, we did do a very robust stakeholder engagement approach here. And we wanted to kind of just call out some of the key findings that we found and so that you can see how they directly feed into our brand. So a couple of the pieces that stood out is we definitely heard time and time again that Horn Payne is undeniably surrounded by nature, super beautiful and scenic and offering an abundance of outdoor recreation and activities for people. Horn Payne's community has this really selfless mentality and a warmth that can be felt in unity and togetherness. And we heard that Horn Payne is hopeful for the future and giving the next generation opportunities to build and grow. And so you can see at the left, the longhand side, we have a nice cool quote of, I described the current state of Horn Payne as ready. We're ready for what's going to happen, for whatever is coming next. We just need the ideas, the investors, the shakers and the visionary. So we loved that quote. It really kind of reiterates that your township is a place that is ready for the next chapter. So it's very exciting for us. Moving on, we wanted to call out a few points from our survey. So 71 of the survey participants believe that Horn Payne is defined by its natural landscape. So of course it reflected throughout the logo concept. 64% of people being in the center of Ontario reflects the community. So we were of course very careful to make sure that it was integrated as well. And only 33% believe that Horn Payne's history and heritage are significant in terms of their values. So these are, that can be touched upon in different messaging pieces, but certainly isn't going to necessarily be a focal point. And then at long frequency, the bears are part of the community. They're built into our memory. Then everyone still relate to them. So just something to keep in mind. Now, as our Myra said, we're getting to the brand framework pieces so that infrastructure in terms of those messaging. So up first, we have our brand story and we imagine this being a piece that you can use as a boilerplate or as the foundation for different marketing pieces. So tucked within the boreal forest's natural beauty in the Algoa region, Horn Payne, a little town in the center of Ontario, was founded in 1915 along the tracks of the Enrayles transcontinental line. To this day, the town is surrounded by more nature than meets the eye, offering untapped opportunities for those looking to chart their own adventures and leave a legacy. While the community is small, its size is contrasted by the measure of its heart. Horn Payne is a hardworking and neighborly town where strangers quickly become family and memories are made to share. Whether you're looking for adventure in the wars, a place to plant your roots amongst nature or a site to talk, to tap into your business potential, Horn Payne is the place to be at the center of the ball. Moving on to our brand comments, which is just a statement that can be used to really indicate to people what they can expect from Horn Payne, from the topic. So the welcome screen is.
I'm not hearing her. Yeah, we, sorry, we're having a difficult time hearing you, Andrea.
Yeah, I'm getting a little feedback, to be honest with you. Can you, I'm not sure how to fix this.
Can we try putting ours on mute? Can you put us on mute? We'll try putting ours on mute and seeing if that helps.
Great. Sounds good. Can you hear me a little bit better? I can't see anybody, so you'll have to unmute for a second to let me know if this is better for you.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Great. Okay, perfect. Sounds good. So again, just saying this, sorry, Myra, the brand promise is just a statement to really indicate what people can expect from Horn Payne time and time again. So in case you didn't hear previously, to welcome strangers as family, offer uncharted possibilities and share unforgettable adventures in the great outdoors. And moving on to the brand mission and vision statement, or statements rather. For these statements, we did do some workshopping here. We tried to retain the essence of the message that you already have. But for example, with the mission statement, we really wanted to position this as something the township is doing. So more of an action statement versus something it is and that we are statement. So in this case, your current statement is we are municipal, we are a municipality focused on providing value-added experiences to our citizens, visitors and investors. And we just did a slight tweak of to offer meaningful and valuable experiences to our residents, visitors and investors. Vision statement. So and then likewise with your vision statement, taking that left-hand statement and making it a bit more action-oriented and future-focused. So we have our quest for continual improvement and quality of life will make us the township where people want to live, work, visit and invest. And then that slight tweak would be to strive for continuous improvement and equality of life that entices residency, tourism and investment. So moving on to your brand values, we didn't really touch these too much. We do have an addition that we're recommending at the end. So the first one we have honest. We will uphold virtuous principles in our daily activities. We will demonstrate our dependability and reliability. We will be truthful and authentic in the workplace. We will strive to make good judgments consistently by carefully weighing all reasonable options and assessing how our decisions may impact others. Accountable. We will hold ourselves accountable for our commitments and our performance. As a public organization, we will conduct business in the open with clarity and we will report on our major activities. This will build trust within our organization and our community. Then we have hardworking. Diligence and consistency will be at the heart of all we do. We will find ways to work efficiently by leveraging smart technology and best practices. We will maintain high standards, work in earnest and go above the call of duty as we deliver our services. We have respectful. We will be accepting everyone regardless of any differences. We will be kind and courteous. We will listen attentively and respond with compassion. Inclusive. We will welcome all people. We will embrace diversity of all kinds. All people will receive access to our services and resources. We will strive to build a team founded on trust and respect regardless of our differences. Resident-focused. Our focus is our community. We will consider resident needs as we conduct our daily activities and as we make decisions that positively impact our community. And then the last addition that we have, just based on some of the things we heard during our stakeholder engagement activities and to really sort of complement the overall vibe that we're going with with the brand is adventurous. So we are enamored by the natural beauty and endless possibilities that surround us. We always look to discover uncharted opportunities, continuously asking ourselves what's next. Positioning statement. So welcome to an untapped, outdoor-loving community located in the center of Ontario, surrounded by seemingly, seemingly endless natural landscapes and the long northeastern Ontario's railway, where the place for residents, visitors and businesses can cut their own path, blaze trails with new friends and leave their mark. You decide what happens in the township of Horn Payne. And now we have our tagline concepts. So just to be clear, these are a series of concepts. We are ultimately hoping that one will be landed on and all of them do sort of touch on that center of Ontario piece. So first we have life's better at the center. This tagline references Horn Payne's lifestyle advantages while warmly welcoming visitors, residents and investors to a community that's sweet to its core at the center of Ontario. We've got number two at the center of adventure or alternatively, we could do at the center of wonder. Sort of those similar meanings there. So this tagline highlights Horn Payne's central location as a playground for one's curiosity and adventurous spirit, inviting visitors, residents and investors to run wild and discover the possibilities that await. Up next, we have let's meet at the center. So this tagline emphasizes Horn Payne's neighborly spirit, widely opening the door to visitors, residents and investors looking to explore a town in the middle of Ontario where strangers quickly become family. And then lastly, we have adventure begins at the center. So this tagline positions Horn Payne as the starting point for one's next great adventure, inspiring visitors, residents, investors to plot their own course in the center of Ontario. So again, you can see that central theme coming forth. We really thought that was important based on our stakeholder engagement findings. And so you have four concepts there to consider. And now on to the fun stuff. We know that you've seen some of these, so we'll go through them with you in a little more detail. Okay, concept A. So this logo depicts a mama bear with her cub paying tribute and evolving the home of the three bears tagline. The mother watches over her young, signifying a hopeful and caring outlook for future generations. The vibrant color palette uses green tones alluding to the region's growth and the landscapes, while bright golden sparkles act as guiding lights welcoming eager explorers to the center of Ontario. So here is concept A. So as you can see at the bottom right there, we've used negative space to sort of carve out that bear cub. We've brought in some flora and fauna and those sparkles that were referenced. Go ahead, Myra. Perfect. We also wanted to show how this could work with different colored backgrounds. So we have the lighter version on the left and then the darker version on the right just to really show that flexibility and understanding that this logo is going to live in multiple places. So we want to make sure that we can kind of demonstrate what that would actually look like for you. And here is a bit of a logo breakdown. So here at the top left, you can see star acts as a guiding beacon. We've got the flora denoting the untouched nature of Central Ontario. We've got the mother bear, which we stylized off of a black bear, reflecting a sense of care and resilience. And then we've got the cub symbolizing growth and future prosperity. We always like to show how logo concepts would sit relative to nearby concepts to see how they stand out. So you can kind of see how this one differs from a lot of the other ones. And then of course, the fun stuff. We always want to show how a logo would actually interact in possible assets and give some examples of how this would look and live and breathe in your community in the different ways. So we've got a lovely little tote bag, which is always handy and people absolutely love. And then we've got some sticker samples here that could be used to sort of help generate and build that community pride. We have a nice little t-shirt here. I always say that one way to mark the success of a brand is to see if it's actually wearable and if people are excited to wear that logo and that brand on their sleeve. And then we also have a flag and you can really see how those brand elements, the sort of flora and fauna is being used to create a bit of a pattern and add some visual accents to what could otherwise be a very flat piece. So it's just really nice to see how it all comes together. And now we have concept B. So one simply cannot overlook the natural beauty that envelops Horn Payne. The hexagonal logo concept showcases the community for what it truly is, a hidden gem in the middle of Ontario. In its frame, the scene of a mama bear and her cub, a tribute to the home of the three bears tagline, takes place, hinting at the township's nurturing mentality and dedication to future generations. The outdoor-inspired color palette features cool blue and rich green tones emphasizing Central Ontario's untouched ambience. So here we have this beautiful logo concept, again, very earthy, very natural, showing the bears. And then again, just showing how this could live on different colors. So we've got a blue at the top and then we've got the dark green at the bottom and then that knockout sort of the white there. And then the flat white as well. So you can see it's a very flexible concept that can be used in a variety of different ways. And then I have a logo breakdown. So the hexagonal design implies a hidden gems. We base this off of a gem type design. The scenery depicts the nature of Central Ontario. So those trees and the hills and things like that. And then we've got the sun acting as a guiding light. And then we've got the bear family again stylized to depict black bears, reflecting care and growth. And then we did make sure that our font choice again was very clear and easy on the eye and nothing too fancy or script-like. And then here you can see how this one sits relative to nearby logos. Just to give you a sense of what that would look like branded with other areas. And again, showing how this would work in applications. We have that beautiful tote bag. We've got the stickers that we could be used or, you know, even those could be coasters for restaurants or bars and things like that in the area. We have a lovely t-shirt, lots of real estate to make some fun patterns and pieces there. And then again, we've got that flag to showcase how this would live on. So there are those bigger pieces in the community. So we know that you've had this presentation for a little while, so you could actually think about saying things. But just giving some evaluation criteria, I think, is really helpful because it can be really difficult to step outside of our own subjective opinions to think about the bigger picture. And so we find that having logo evaluation criteria in place is really helpful. So I think some important things to consider are, do these concepts express a brand character, affinity, style and personality? Do they speak to you? Do they stand out? Do these concepts tell a story in an authentic and memorable way? So you could see those, that those logo concepts sitting compared to all of the other ones. Did it stand out to you? Did it tell a story? Does it have elements that lend themselves to a story or marketing initiatives? Are these concepts unique, authentic and original? Do they represent your community well? And then lastly, will these concepts inspire people to visit, relocate or learn more? So just some things to keep in mind as we're going through. So again, just kind of one final look at the two logos side by side. They definitely have similarities but are definitely very different as well, which is exciting. And that is it. So that concludes our presentation. We want to thank you and our lovely project team for entrusting us with this project. We hold our brands very close to our hearts. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But in terms of next steps, we are looking for you all to kindly email Eileen with your preferred tagline and logo concept by this Friday, the 9th at noon. So I will open the floor.
Okay, I'm going to open up the floor for council discussion and council questions. Council Blinda Kissmaker, go ahead.
I basically have one. And so one I have is when you talk, talk about Horn Payne, we always talked about the three bears. And I noticed in yours, you don't have three bears. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, so that's a good question and I knew that this was going to come up. So while we did hear that the bears hold significance to the community and given that we're trying to evolve beyond the home of the three bears tagline to be more focused on being the center of Ontario, we didn't feel bound to the number of bears depicted per se. We just felt that it was very necessary to make sure that they were actually included. So it's very hard to depict this being at the center of Ontario in a logo, whereas it's a little easier to do that in a tagline, but we wanted to make sure those bears were included. So we opted to include them in the logo versus that tagline piece.
Should I answer your question? Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's going to be hard to explain. So that's why I'm asking like, how do we?
Yeah, that's one question that I have for both logos, depending on where council goes. I felt the same about three bears. I'm just going to put it out there. I have a preference for B. But is there any way that we can incorporate another cub onto that logo? Because it's, it just, it's going to be confusing to our public and like we have a full statue. Lots of people take pictures there and I'd like the logo to kind of emulate that a bit as well.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor Ford. We can, if the consensus is that we should add that third bear, we can definitely add the third bear into the chosen logo concept. That's no problem.
Okay, great. That's great. Councillor Drago Stanis.
Yeah, I'll just hang on to my colleagues here. I looked at that, marked it up. I would suggest respectfully, as a mayor said, I would go with that one as well. I would put one cub behind the main bear. I mean, there's always, cubs don't always pay attention to mama bear, right? So instead of two in the front, one in the front, one in the back. That's my take on that, actually. I'm the bad one, just like my family. Excellent report. Super, super report. I mean, I've read so many reports the last 40 years. Fantastic information. The question I had because of the logo, when you did your synopsis from your surveys, interviews, focus groups, was there any talk, including the part of railway, railway ties, anybody, I realize, Beletz culture, I noticed you in the report, anybody mentioned possibly anything to do with trains or transportation?
Yeah, so we definitely, the railway definitely did come up during our stakeholder engagement. The consensus seemed to be that although it was recognized as a significant part of Horn Payne's history, a lot of people didn't seem to see its place in Horn Payne's future. And so while again, we did definitely hear about it, we just didn't hear enough to make us think that it was essential to be included in the logo concepts. It seemed like a lot of people recognized it as a historical piece and something that can be touched on in marketing materials and messaging and things like that, but not necessarily important enough to be a focal point of our logo concepts.
Thank you. Response and excellent report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to keep on this tagline as well as my colleagues, like Councillor Kissmaker says. I really love the report. Personally, I like number B. That's, that's, to me is going forward. And, and I totally understand what you're, we're trying to change, not change things, but go forward, move forward. And keeping the theme of three bears, I also thought of that. And I'm just thinking like, if we're going from the past and looking into the future, if you were to have something like, just a suggestion, I'm looking at B, say, because that's my, that's a personal opinion. I really like that one. Looks a little more new, fresh. If we could have a shadow casting off of the mama bear or something, you know, so that would represent a third bear, the home of the three bears, but it's also the past, future, you know, the mama bear, the present, the cub is our future. Something like that, you know, just that, because I think that's Horn Payne, that's, people will be talking. I think everybody likes that concept of the three bears actually being a visual thing. But I really love how both of them, especially the one where you got the cub going into like the offset. And it's, it's very creative, very nice job well done.
I really appreciate that. And that's actually a very nice idea. We can bring that back to the council for, yeah. Thank you.
Great. Councillor Chenman, go ahead.
Thank you. It's through you, Madam Mayor. I understand and thank you. Great report. I too have a bit of the issue with the thing, the three bears. And I understand the difficulty in trying to capture the diversity of Horn Payne and be able to, you know, we've got the center of Ontario, we've got forestry, we have tourism, we have the rail. And I acknowledge that it's an immense task to, to be set before you to try to capture the, what we need to be able to do. But and although it's challenging, I think the first visual has to jump off that page. We've got like three seconds when that comes before us, be able to catch our attention, be able to grab that. And the image does, but I, again, I'm going to say that I believe that we do need to have the three bears. And I also believe that the railway is an important part. The railway certainly has the potential to outlive forestry. It's sad to say, but the way our government is going, the railway will always be a part. The forestry, we here locally, we could be at a whim. Something could happen and change that. But the railway will always be there. I mean, and that's why we see corporations, we see Vanguard, Blackrock, the Gates Foundation investing in the railway. That isn't going anywhere quickly. And people could say, well, diversified where the Gates Foundation relieved themselves of a bunch of that. But what they did was it all, it was all sold to Vanguard and Blackrock. So it was just a change of ownership. It wasn't a change of direction. And I really think that with, when we think that we're going to be into a purpose or a position where we could very possibly be into the 15-minute cities and things. So we really have to have that localized to be able to do that. And I think we need to incorporate railway. I think we need to incorporate railway into three bears. And and that would be my, I think. Either either logo I like. And I actually prefer A over that. And just because it's more lively to me than the passive. B is more passive. And I like the the action going forward. I like the the A. Thank you. Very well done. The the written part of the presentation is great. The images are great. I think we just need to look at those two things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor.
I have a few comments just to go through the report. It's under brand story that that were tucked away and that it was created founded in nineteen fifteen. And Hornpane, we actually established that in nineteen twenty eight. That might have been six facts that you were seeing in nineteen fifteen. And I just don't want to confuse people because we haven't had our hundredth anniversary and that is coming in twenty twenty eight. Yes, we want to clean that up. I want to just say that the law, that same page, I loved the last sentence. Hornpane is the place to be at the center of it all. I just, I'd love to see that on different materials, but not as a tagline, but we need to reiterate that through. Going through on our brand vision, I I just have to give you a huge shout out for the proposed and making it alive and action. I just, I just love this. This departure from our current hats off to I I actually wrote love on my paper copy here. Okay, moving on to the brand values, I again, I think adventurous needs to be added. I think if we are to move forward with the logo, that we actually have to adjust our own strategic planning and put that in. I think it highlights that we do want to be active in developing the center of Ontario. We have, we've talked about it several times that we want to welcome back snowmobilers to our community. And we just want to really bring that portion of our community that has been, you know, on the decline for over a decade now, back to revival. So I I really like that value. And just on the next page, the positioning statement. Well done. The only concern I had was the northeastern. We don't identify ourselves either northeastern or northwestern. We're the center of Ontario and we are smack dab pretty much in the center of the north. Like we are divided sometimes, like we sit on boards that head west towards Thunder Bay. And then we sit on board that head east towards Timmins and Sue St. Marie and that sort of thing. So I'm not sure if we can just tweak the positioning statement to say north central. Ontario Railway and then it keeps that center theme in in our language, right?
That's very smart.
Okay. And like I said already, we definitely need another bear. My comments on the logo. I I really like logo B. I like that it's, I didn't depict the forest as forestry. I depict the forest as the center of Ontario. I like the gem concept because I've heard that many, many times that we're a gem, we're a hidden gem, all of that. I do kind of feel there's a bit, it's hidden, the center of Ontario is hidden a bit in this logo. I don't, I also, although no offense to CN, even though they're my employer, but I think we're trying to diversify Hornpane. And I don't want us to get tagged into one industry. And my my thing about that is although I uphold like it's a huge provider in our community. We have said this in attracting investors, we really need to diversify our economic market. And it may be that we end up using CN quite frequently through transportation and all of that. But I also see that I want our logo, one of our values is to be inclusive. And if we highlight one industry in our logo, I'm going, I feel like that's not very inclusive. And I don't feel like this, the forest is about highlighting forestry. And I'm thinking from your brand development, that wasn't your intent either. If that's correct.
That is correct. Yeah, we more foresaw the the included forestry to sort of indicate and highlight the natural beauty, the outdoor amenities and things like that. Yeah.
So and I'm, I'm giving you all my comments right now. I am not going to submit by Friday. So this is what where it's at. But so, yeah, I would like to see something else with the third bear, a cub. I love the about a shadow because in our agenda meeting, we talked about that too, about even possibly shadowing the cub. So I leave that up to you. You're the experts. But our three bears are quite well established in our community. It's it's our logo for our hockey team. It's 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 just really is. And it's so many people have pictures who visit of the three bears. And and it's a focal point right on our, when we're welcoming people into town. So I think it does need to be incorporated fully into the logo with three. And yeah, that's that's my only comments from the report. And and I open it back up to counsel. Counselors.
Hey, Mayor. I'll do my synopsis. Friday I have two meetings virtual, so I won't have a chance to respond. So
Okay, yeah.
I agree with the with the letter B. I've discussed extra cub. I agree with your proposed terminology for brand mission, for brand vision. And the other thing I would say, Senator, I thought it would crucially geographic center of Ontario. I think that there's a fine difference. So if you could sort of check into that, please, instead of center of Ontario, geographic, but that's the whole hosting, whole thing started, correct?
Yes.
And I'm part of the committee. So that's why I suggest that. And the rest is great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to, sorry, Belinda, just before I go, I'm going to open up the floor because we haven't, we've touched a lot on the logos. And we haven't touched on the taglines and council should have a discussion on that as well. And I am in agreement with Counselor Stefanic about the geographic center of Ontario. That does need to be the language we use. Because, you know, we're going to be competing with Toronto if we use center of Ontario. Like, and we don't like, we don't have the people power to compete with them. So.
Fair enough.
Thank you so much, Counselor Belinda Kistemaker. Go ahead.
One thing on your first concept, your logo with the first air. One thing that struck me is your star. I thought when you were saying a guiding beacon, I thought maybe it should be where the head is. Up there. Just giving it like it's a like a guiding star as well as a beacon. I really liked your presentation. I really liked the positioning statement that made me actually laugh. So I thought that was pretty good. It was good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, I think we should have a discussion now on the tagline. There's four concepts that have been the thank you for bringing them up as well on the screen.
Where is it? There we go.
So I open up the floor for comments. Is there one that stands, Counselor Belinda Kistemaker?
The one that stood out to me was under three. Let's meet at the center. That one is the one I wanted to pick.
Uh, it's not page.
Tagline. Just the logos.
Counselor Stefanic, do you have any?
I had, I don't know if you, I wasn't listening very careful at your end of your discussion. I have number four.
Okay.
I don't reset the number four.
I haven't said what I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I told you.
Yeah, no, no.
No wonder you hear it, okay? I like adventure begins at the center. It doesn't begin here, it doesn't begin in Toronto, it doesn't be beginning in Winnipeg, it begins right at the center. That would be my take on it. And that's number four. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sherman, do you have a preference?
I would prefer number four also, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
I agree. Yeah, now that I found it.
Okay, we're getting consensus. Sorry, Belinda, but I'm going to go with number four too. But the only thing with that is counsel, I really do think we need to adopt adventure adventurous as part of our values then. This isn't, I, and I just, it spoke to me. And I think it gives us an another key avenue to reach out to investors and visitors to our community. And that's what I'm looking at. But I would agree that it does need to say geographic center of Ontario, anywhere where we're not at the top, though adventure begins at the center. That's great.
Yeah, we can definitely make sure that the geographic center of Ontario has worked into those framework pieces. And then, of course, this is something that will be built and elaborated on over time. So there's going to be tons of opportunity in your marketing and your communication materials to really hone in on that and elaborate on that piece.
Okay, is there any further information that you would need from counsel right now to move forward?
So it sounds like the consensus is that tagline number four will be what we would like to move forward with. And then it seems like there is some like of both concepts, but logo B is potentially standing out a little bit more. However, we know that we will need to include that third bear. So we can definitely explore that piece. And Eileen, feel free to chime in if I'm wrong, but I think the, what we would like to have happen next is just by Friday, the ninth, just sending an email to Eileen with your chosen tagline concept. Your chosen logo concept. And then we can make some edits, like I said, add in that third bear to this sort of leading logo concept. And represent and get this done and dusted for you.
So if counsel is in agreement with, it sounds like you've already chosen a tagline and a logo. We do have the
Oh, yeah.
motion on the agenda already. So we can just go ahead and put in tagline number four and logo B. Okay, but the logo B would be with the adjustments though, right?
Yes.
Okay, and?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Are we in agreement to do that, counsel? And then there's they would cinnamon toast would be good to move forward? Okay. And then what would come back? Will the logo come back to us so that we can have a look at what the changes to logo be then?
I believe, I'm not sure if it would be a full presentation. It could always come back just as information only to counsel kind of thing, or just as a discussion item?
Yeah, my concern is that in the motion, we're actually saying concept B. It doesn't give any adjustments to that. And then we've had full discussion of counsel, everyone on council wants some adjustments. So we're just, I just want clarification of how we all know what that logo is that we're actually.
So I believe we could also defer this motion if needed.
We can defer. I also did put move forward so that it's not like a like it's it's more
We're choosing it, counsel. Yeah.
And we could also add instead of like a period comma as per council discussion. Okay, is counsel good with that? Okay, counsel, I give you one last time to fit your piece on any logo you want or any tagline. Because right now we have tagline concept four and logo concept B in the motion. So, okay, I'm not seeing any further discussions. So if I can get a mover in a second or please move by Counselor Drago. Seconded by Counselor Peter Kistemaker. Whereas counsel has received a brand presentation from cinnamon toast news media incorporated cinnamon toast providing four tagline concepts and two logo concepts in the township Hornpane. Therefore, do it resolve that the council of corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby wish to move forward with tagline concept four and logo concept B as per council discussion. Those in favor? And that is carried. Well, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. And I echo from all the counselors that had said that they enjoyed the presentation. It was well done. And I think you have captured what the community wanted. And I'm looking forward to seeing the final product. And thank you so much.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you too.
Have a good evening.
Have a great evening. Bye for now. Okay, so moving on, counsel, we're on to departmental reports. And if I can get a mover in a second here to open the floor. By Counselor Peter Kistemaker, seconded by Counselor Ted Sherman. It resolved with council corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby acknowledge receipt of the departmental reports provided at the regular meeting council held on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty four. And our first report is the CIO report. And Eileen, you wanted to speak to your report ahead of the question.
So I just wanted to provide a verbal update to counsel. That the road maintenance speed item will be coming back to close on March sixth, because I had originally mentioned in my in my December monthly report that I was coming back to the February twenty first closed meeting. But I'll have to be moved to the March sixth meeting now.
Is that all your updates?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll open up the floor for a question or comment for the CIO.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for, to Eileen to follow up with the water agency on my questions. I appreciate that. I like the presentation. I appreciate it. The Third Avenue, I noticed a geo study. Referring to the was through you or Dwayne, was this a study done of the actual roadbed on Third Avenue? Geo technical study?
Yes, it was.
Did the report arrive yet?
No, they had, North Rock Engineering had advised us that these two that the survey and the investigation were done, but I don't have any reports as of yet.
And the reason, Mayor, I asked for that, we discussed last meeting regarding the residue or silt or sand for the possibility behind arena or the ball field. That's why you have.
Right, right. And I've been heard of.
So to see the report, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good question. Thank you. Any further questions for Eileen and her report? Okay, I want to give a big shout out. I was checking the website for the municipal grants program, township of Hornpane. So a big shout out to yourself and your staff. And yeah, I I love that. Hopefully it improves efficiency. And from there, I don't have any other things that I would like to discuss. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the acting treasures report. And the floor is open for questions, counsel, and Eileen will take them. And Richard's not with us this evening, but she'll follow up. Go ahead, Counselor.
Just a comment regarding donations to the arena. I spoke to you after meeting. In nineteen eighty four, eighty five, eighty six, eighty seven, eighty, eighty eight, nineteen ninety, we had a special account donations to the arena. People received receipt. It was through the accounting department, through the treasurer. It was, as he said, there's nothing special about it. One good effort, the arena and for the ball field. When people donate, they have to get a receipt and to tally skip with the treasury. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any further questions on the treasury report?
Actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe I'll just mention something. You talked about the tax write offs. Just wanted to mention like, Richard put something in his report about not always wise to proceed with tax sale process. What, if you look back tonight, in your readings, the Noma report, there, there, they have a thing going on right now where they've gone to the government on tax sales. So take note of that for on what's been going on within the north at least. Or anywhere, because what's happening is people, the tax sales, whatever on houses, if I understand correctly. If they're, they're losing money. They're not, because they can't retain it, because the government ends up taking it all from you. And what they're trying to push is let us keep the money so we can put it into our community. So that's something that we should keep an eye on.
Yeah, so you're talking about when, so we would get to retain the assessed value, but if it's sold beyond that assessed value, all of that goes to the government.
It's going to the government. It's not. And that's what they're fighting against.
Right.
Someone will pay attention to.
Yeah. Counselor Peter Kistemaker, go ahead.
While I just see the donations for the arena and the ball field project, I just, this is something that maybe Eileen could look into it. Or the treasurer could look into it. We once had a fund, Drago may know what this, I was only told about it. I wasn't involved in any way, but but when there was money being raised for the hot tub. I believe that money is some is still sitting in a special account. I mean, we're not getting hot tub, but like maybe start the fundraising by putting that towards this.
Okay. I believe.
Uh, I believe the acting treasurer, the EDO, and I had a discussion about that, and he will be allocating that money because, yeah, it's been sitting in there since
Many years.
So that he'll, I can't recall where it would be going to, but it wouldn't be a hot hot tub fund anymore. But uh, but yeah, we, I can talk with the acting treasurer about that.
Just a note on that, it might be wise for us to actually pass a motion to move that money because it'll be a sensitive issue for our community.
So I think it's going going to come up actually when you guys are having the budget discussion, yeah.
Great. Counselor, Linda?
I just wanted, and if there was any other reserves that you see money just sitting there, can we transfer?
And I'm wondering too, because we are starting to think about our twenty 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 eight celebrations. Is that something we want to, because we already have a fund started for that? Is that something that we want people to be able to donate to? I'm thinking throughout the year, there's parties that happen and that sort of thing that that might be an avenue that they can put their money towards. Counselor Stanek, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just want to step back a couple steps regarding tax sales. We as council, we could set the price of the house of land, correct? We have no stipulation by province of Ontario. So there's tax areas, we obtained a house and a land, we can sell it. Does it matter what the assessed value is? We can set a one price, correct?
Yeah, we can. Well, it'll sell for, usually what happens is it sells for market value
Yeah, I understand.
in the perfect world, but it's the price above that assessment value isn't isn't legally ours right now.
Right.
Yeah.
But we set the price the same. We can't. We have authority.
I think right now we is we have to sell them at assessed value. That's what there was for the tax sale. But we can get, can we get clarification?
I just thought that we could set the price. Honestly, that's what I thought.
My understanding is no, we
So sorry, mayor, for if you repeat what the question is.
Uh, on a tax sale, if we are able to set the price or if we have to use the assessment value price. So we'll get clarification here just to make sure. So I just um, just because we are on the treasurer or the treasurer's report, last year we had discussion about possibly putting in RFP to go with new auditors. And I don't think right now is the right time to do it. We're going to be coming into an audit, and we've had many things on the plate, but I do think that's something that we should look at for next year. It's best practice. We've talked about this. We haven't RFP'd for new auditors in I don't know how many years. I know the whole time I've been on council, we haven't. So um, and I don't want to overwhelm staff. We did talk about it last year to do it this year, but I do think we should do it for next year. And I look to council for discussion on that. Counselor Gray?
I concur.
Okay. Okay.
So it was good.
Agree. Okay, so I'll leave it. I link to yourself to whatever you need from council for that. If we need a motion or something in an upcoming meeting. And I want to second the donations for the arena. I'd like to see those accounts that we're getting onto a mindset where let's let's build some stuff without having debt on it or trying to find ways. The last question that I had for the treasurer, I just wanted to um, it comes up with over tax sales during our budget discussion. We had um some examples that we don't necessarily have to put a property up for tax sale, and that was confusing to me during our budget meetings because I thought after the two-year process, we had to. And I just, I really want clarification on that. And I believe the example during the budget meeting was that um taking on properties that could be environmentally damaged, and then we carry the liability and risk of that. So my question is twofold. Do we have the choice? And is there anything in our current policies that are causing us to do it this way?
Was that, sorry.
Yeah.
What is that answer? And I think that he might have answered that because he did mention the the tax sale process, and that wasn't part of what was mentioned, like, I remember, I think you asked that at the last meeting.
Yeah, I did at the budget meeting. I asked it, but just with the treasurer's report here. The question I have is that at our last tax sales, we didn't have the opportunity to look, we didn't even, they were posted before they came to the council. So that step in between before they're posted for tax sale, do we get the opportunity to say, no, we don't want to post that for tax sale?
So this, in in acting treasurer's report, he says the staff have delegated authority to proceed with the tax sale process, which is the normal process and what what he's experienced in all the townships he's worked in. And if there's a situation where the staff deems it unwise to proceed with the tax sale process, then the vesting, or more specifically, the vesting property into the township's name, and then they should make the count, make council aware of the situation and reason for the recommendation to not move forward with it.
Okay, so my question is then, in the in the policy, what are we what have we given staff authority to deem unacceptable? Just because the example used at our budget meeting was the exact thing that we did. Okay, so that's my concern. And that's why I had it twofold, like, do we have document like? And this is, I'm not coming from a place of blame or anything. I'm actually want to find out like, how do we make sure that we're not vesting properties that may be an environmental hazard or that sort of thing?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other further questions for the treasurer? Okay, moving on to public works manager. Do you have anything to add to your report? No, okay. Any questions for the public works manager? No? Go ahead, councilor Linda Kissmaker.
Did you finally get the parts for the curling club?
As of today, about two o'clock with the purpose of this ivory.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to follow up that question. How hopefully are you that this, these parts and all of this will work for next year? Yeah.
What happened is the one valve that failed, it caused a whole bunch of other damage. The pressure went too high, including pipes and seals and everything else. It's time.
It's time. Okay, thank you, Dwayne. Any other further questions? Okay, they're being done. We'll move on to Stacy's report. Is Stacy's with us virtually or?
She was just attending for the rebranding.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, if we have any questions for the economic development officer? Okay, they're being done. We'll move on. Put that acknowledgement to both those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to the correspondent's action items, ten point one. This is a letter of concern that just came out of the blue, right? Like there was no background with this? Would you like to speak to that?
Uh, I don't have anything further to to add, and just to answer your question, yes, it just came out of the blue.
Okay. Okay, I'll open up the floor for discussion from council on what we'd like to do with this. Counselor Drago Stanek?
My first reaction, I would defer it till I see other municipalities, how they react to this issue, individual.
Okay.
To see what the other people are supporting or not supporting it. Because I don't have much data. I read a couple of times, and it's not very clear to me. There's so many issues that I mean, I see them in theme, but to see whether municipalities support in this movement.
Yeah, maybe what we could do is um so that it's not, we're not just looking at municipalities. He did see C. Phenom. Maybe we reach out to uh mapping at Phenom and find out what's going on there and if they're tabling it and if they're doing any work into it. Okay, so we're looking at deferring this item until further information is gathered. Okay, so I'm going to put a motion to defer on the floor. If I can get a mover in a second here, please. Move by councilor Peter Kissmaker, second by councilor Dragan. Do it resolve that council does defer item, right, ten point one to the next available council meeting? Does that work? And the next available council meeting once the information mount?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to stop there. Do it resolve that council does defer item ten point one? And the title is G. Richard's letter of concern to the next available council meeting. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on to ten point two is the crown land disposition in northern municipalities. So this letter council was sent to me, and I find it quite interesting because it, my understanding of it is that there there might be some transfer of crown land or we might be able to acquire some of that. So I um, so put it on the floor for us to discuss, but I also was talking with Eileen in our agenda meeting that I think it's would be wise for our economic development officer to look at this as well because we put in stipulations in our official plan about agriculture and different things, and we had had discussions that we don't have enough land for that. So I'm not sure if that fits with this or not, so I would like to defer to an upcoming meeting and see if this is something we want to go for. Is any further discussion or Counselor Dragan?
That would also do, we discussed this while the homesteading too as well.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I like it. I'm just concerned, though, with how long they're going to open it up, but I guess it's a task to send them. No. We'll defer it for now because we need more information. So if I can get a mover in a second or please. Move by councillor Ted Schenman, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Do it resolve that council does defer item ten point two to the next available council meeting. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, item number ten point three is the connecting wind speed reduction. Excuse me? Diamond, did you want to speak to this? I have a note on the side, and usually I put notes on the side of speaking to it, so.
Uh, I don't have anything further to add. I just wanted it to be brought to council's attention just because MTO has indicated that we don't need their approval to move to adjust the speed at all. And once council's discussed, we can always turn back a motion at an upcoming meeting.
Okay, great. So this is that section where we wanted to increase the speed back. So where are we at on this, council? Open the floor right now. Counselor Born Kissmaker?
I started this.
Yes.
Is uh, I would like it still brought forward, saying that I wanted to go back to at least what which the last change before the forty kilometers.
Okay, I'm going to defer through yourself to the public works manager to explain what it was the last before last, just so we get it right this time.
It was fifty.
It was fifty.
Yeah.
Okay, so it, right now it's forty, right to the Wicksteed trade off?
That's the first land or the transfer.
Okay.
Just pass there, speeds back up.
Okay, and it goes from forty to
Sixty.
sixty? And what we're proposing is it goes to forty to the cemetery and then fifty?
And then starts at fifty.
Fifty there?
Yeah, and then goes to seventy, like we had it before.
Oh, and then goes to seventy, okay.
You want to back up to seventy?
Yes.
I started, you're going to go for the gusto here, aren't you? Okay.
Back to what we had, the previous change.
Okay, and what's your?
And just because it doesn't work, just doesn't work. I guarantee that if you're monitoring us, that we're not paying attention, we're not doing, it's a speech trap. That's all I
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Dwayne.
It was done for safety reasons, that's why it was slowed down. My operators have many, many scares with the trucks and everything else. And the dump by the first transfer on the transfer station, that was slowed down because of accidents coming out of the transfer station. That was reduced down fifty for that reason.
To fifty for that reason, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, and when we first talked about this, it was because you were having problems with public works individuals were having problems, and I get that. However, when we changed it to forty, it just doesn't work.
Okay, uh, just before I go to the theater, just another question for Dwayne. Is, have you noticed the difference for your staff now that it's reduced to sixty?
Since we reduced to sixty, we've had one incident, it was just last week, we had one to another, and that's been really good. I've had my greater operators scared of his wits, and they also speech reduces speed down.
Okay, okay.
Really bad before, like a daily thing.
Yeah, okay, so the sixty is working then?
For sure.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Peter Kissmaker, go ahead.
I would agree with Counselor Kissmaker on that. The only thing is, I I like, I really like the idea of forty right up to the landfill. The first, the transfer stations, pardon me, for safety reasons, absolutely. But the sixty, I would agree with Belinda, is uh, our problem is lack of controlling from OBP. And it is speed trap, like it, so, you know, I followed so many people like they're doing. Like I, even myself, I caught myself, I was doing seventy, and I'm looking like, I'm in a forty. Potentially could lose a license over this. And it's just a, I don't know, sixty was pretty slow. I was happy when it was down to seventy, but forty kilometers an hour, whatever everybody agrees on to and pa, even past the uh, the uh, transfer station, I'm in full agreement with that. It's a safety issue. But we have to start getting patrols because we complain a little bit, which is what I'm going to bring up now that I'm on the P P board. I will be bringing that forward, but it just uh, it's it's just gotten like the Wild West out here. And I totally agree with Dwayne. We don't want our public works employees in danger because people are driving so fast. But the thing is, the guys that are speeding, I see them now, they'll drive by me, I'm doing sixty kilometers an hour, sixty-five, and they'll go by me doing ninety in a log truck. So if the signs are not, you know,
And we got, we have
We have other issues. We have bigger problems.
We need police patrol
Yeah.
to bring it down. My uh, one thing I want to think about is about the forty kilometers, fifty kilometers. I don't see too big of a difference between the cemetery and the beyond the transfer site of either speed. But I think that the speed change can't be just on the other side of the transfer station.
No.
Like it needs to be down, it's at the Wicksteed lights right now, is it not?
Between when they feel the
And the transfer, so it is a bit of waste, because what I'm thinking is if it's right there,
No.
then people are slowing down, like, so you're not doing fifty, you're doing sixty or whatever, right? So I just want to, so it is a far enough away because that's concerning to me. So I'm just, from the public works manager's advice here, I am wary to increase it to seventy because it sounds like it's working for our public works employees.
I have one question. When this first started, it was an eighty kilometer road, okay? And that's when public works, when they're out there, and that's when the safety issues came up. Now, after you knocked it down to seventy, did you notice a change?
I was looking here, so I don't know.
Okay, because that's my thing, because we knocked it down to seventy for that reason, which I, okay, I can go with. It's a safety issue. However, then we knocked it down to sixty, and I didn't get that. And that was because of the forty kilometers, from what I understand.
No, I think, I just want clarity on this because Dwayne did commit when it was on a seventy.
Yes.
So the issues you were seeing with your staff on that road was that seventy kilometers an hour. And then by knocking it down to sixty, he's had one incident since he's done that.
Okay.
So
In the forty or the six?
In the sixteen, sixty.
Okay.
It just happened last week, actually.
Okay. My thing is, is I don't like, just because of one bad apple, whatever, we're all, all of us being penalized for. That's my concern. Are we doing it just because of that or has it been, is there just to have a change to it that affects everybody? That's my point of view. That's just
Yeah. Counselor?
I would err on the side of caution because I think we all know that if it says sixty, people are going to drive eighty. If we make it seventy, they're going to be driving ninety, and some of them are already. Have we, in, that we know of, has there anyone been issued a speeding ticket on that road?
Yes.
In the last, any time frame?
Yes. Not, not uh, not before the sixty, I think.
No, so it's been quite a while. So I I think in to err on the side of caution and and safety, I would prefer to see the sixty stay. And I'm I'm sorry, but it just, I drive that, I, once or maybe, maybe once a month, I go out there. once a month, I go out that far as far as free lake or something, but I, I just don't see giving people that latitude, you're gonna drive twenty over anyways. And it's just gonna get worse instead of better.
It's usually ten.
I, I understand both sides, I don't drive and so I don't have much confidence. However, I'd like to revisit the issue in six months' time, let it go through summer and the up to magical report. If there's, was any incidents at that, at that speed? And was it, is a possibility to go back, you know, we could visit the issue. I mean, if you change it, if time comes. But I mean, right now it seems it's, it's working what it is.
Well, I, what I do hope is if we're not going to change it, I do hope it comes up again. Because.
Have a second look at it, is this what you'd like?
Eventually, yes. Some citizen comes forward and puts in their input.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I have to agree with councillor Schenman. My concern would be that exact thing, that if it went to seventy, we'll see more ninety on there, whereas now it might be tampered back a bit. So the final discussion is the forty kilometer piece. Is that an area that we want to increase to fifty? Councillor Peter Kissmaker, go ahead.
I believe right now we're splitting hairs, because if it's forty, I have no problem with forty to down, correct?
Yes, it is.
And I have, and, and changing it there. Changing, say from the cemetery on, I like the idea of it being slow, just out of respect for anything that has, like any ceremony that's going on. I always stop when there's no one on, but I mean, people just, you don't wanna see them zooming by and, I mean, ten kilometers difference, I don't know how much, that wouldn't make a difference to me. But I mean, I'm fine with the forty.
Okay.
I was, I was up to sixty.
You're okay with the forty?
The forty to the, the end of the cemetery, yes.
Okay.
I am, that should be forty. After that, no, I think it should be fifty.
Okay. This is what we're discussing right now? Any comments on this council? I don't know how much space there is between the cemetery and the turnoff to the transfer station. I'm not sure. Okay. So that's concerning to me because then we'd have someone turning in and then also speeding up if they're not turning in. So I'm just concerned we're gonna create some safety issue there. So.
I've been driving that road at eighty forever, so. Don't do that to you guys, yeah.
I'll make a comment on that and councillor Kissmaker and myself both, this is personal because we travel to work every.
Right.
And we, we have a bend on it. So what, what, what Belinda said earlier, I alluded to, and I think I like that idea is let it come back up in six months, like great, like councillor Stefanic said, and if there is issues, maybe people, we can put it out there, say, put, put your thoughts forward. Because we are elected to represent the people of this township. And the way we're speaking right now is for our own personal, well, actually, the councillors and you and, and, and our public works managers, you can firm safety, on the side of safety, which I totally agree with. And we have a more personal issue with it, and I think that's it. We are representing the town as a whole, we should get the input and, you know, in six months, we can revisit it.
I, I would like to say though, that the people I've talked to is when there was an incident at the at the dump in there. My thoughts was, oh, okay, there, there goes my case again. And the people I talked to, they just said, just keep trying, so hopefully they'll come forward.
Okay. Okay, so just for the sake of not just opening it up to public discussion, then I think if that's something we wanna do, we should have a public meeting about it. So we can monitor it in six months. And why I say this council is that if we open it up, that people can just comment ongoing. We're going to create work for the staff that's not regularly maintained.
And I don't wanna do that.
Yeah, so I'm with councillor Stefanic to have a look at this in six months, so near the end of the summer, we'll go through the rest of the winter, the spring season and then part of the summer. And we've also discussed in the past about having a committee for this road. And if that's something we wanna look at for our advisory, ROAC committee. And, and we can have that discussion then, and then if we decide at that time, I would suggest we open it at a public discussion, public meeting. And people can come and give their input on it. And it's a one-time gathering of information. Does that seem like a good work plan for council on this issue?
Sure.
Eileen, are you good with that? Okay. Is there anything, I think it's a motion to proceed as discussed?
This one will just be proceed.
Proceed as information, okay. Okay, so we'll receive this item of information, but we did discuss the process to move forward with. So should it not be proceeded as discussed?
It can be.
Okay, I've got a motion here that says be it resolved that council does hereby receive item number ten point three. Connecting and speed reduction as information and to proceed as discussed. Does that motion sit well with council?
Yep.
Yes.
If I can get a mover in a second or please. Move by councillor Ted Schenman, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby receive item number ten point three, connecting wind speed reduction as information and proceed as discussed. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, item number ten point four. And this is, they're looking for feedback on the boards, the OPP boards. And I do think we should submit feedback. I was reading this just ahead of our council meeting tonight. And I'm quite it goes through, so if you go to the link, it goes through the composition, composition of the OPP board, and I'm sorry if I don't speak well, councillor, sometimes I have bottom braces, that makes it very difficult. Sometimes. So if I sound squealy or whiskey, that's what it is. Item number two is the term of office of the board members, which I didn't, nothing jumped out at me in that. But it was three, it was the re- renumeration of the OPP board. So this is being downloaded basically on us as a way to look at it, I guess. And we're being required to be part of this board. And what they're suggesting is that the municipalities will decide at the board level of how they're gonna pay for this. And then it'll be divided by the municipalities. You have to click the link on the letter to find it, to where it is. And the other thing is, is that the board can't determine, or if the municipalities can't agree, the minister will determine it. And, and there's not even a budget. Like I'm not even seeing like how much money, how much are we putting into this? And I was discussing with Eileen just before the meeting, like right now, I sit down and we can go up to it quarterly or even every second month. And sit down with the sergeant and have a discussion about our community. So I'm looking for council direction that our staff submit feedback on, like there needs to be funding allocated to this. I don't think it should come out, we already pay enough for policing as a small municipality for a thousand people. And I don't think we should be having to put the bill for this. And there should be, first of all, our board members going to have to travel, our OPV board is going to be established out of Wawa. And they can't always meet virtually. I, I'm a fan of virtual meetings, but you do have to have some in-person meetings to get to know each other. And and, and there's like all of that, so not only are we gonna pay our portion to sit on it, we'll pay our portion of expenses to it. So, so I do think that's one area, there should be some sort of funding or that smaller municipalities get an extra grant to accommodate paying these fees or something. Yeah, and it's so the board will come up with the expenses and the budgeting. And then I think too, I think further that we need to include like, so which treasurer is gonna take care of this board for us? So is it all gonna fall to Wawa, so it's gonna be more expenses for Wawa, that's unfair. And, and more work when we're already, we see it with our own staff that we're trying to make things float, so I think that should be considered. And, and through this, it says, like, they finish it. As long as a unanimous agreement is maintained, the cost will be assured according to the agreed upon arrangement among the municipalities in the detachment area. And I just I, I can see this becoming an inflated cost over time.
Agree.
And, and there's nothing like up ahead, like not that I wanna cut your bill there, Peter, but like they can receive honorariums and stuff. Like this could get.
Get out of hand.
Yes, it could get out of hand.
Or it's going to fail before it even starts.
Yes, yes.
You hear that at the moment?
Yeah.
My opinion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the, one of the questions you've already alluded to is the funding model. Funding model means not only for member board members traveling, but also the staff, what's the gonna be structure of the staff? And the funding model, not only for the treasurer, but the clerk, secretary, executive secretary of the board. Because it'd be a lot of information going back to all the municipalities and also to the ministry. That'll have to be a full-time job.
Yeah.
There'll be extra costs. Especially for the executive secretary, it's a few dollars. So the funding model, hundred percent right, for all those areas. And what's the structure gonna be look like? How many staff? There's nothing saying that at all. I realize it would be initial meeting, but still, you have to have something before you go to a meeting to see what, 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 you know, hey, what, what's the map to travel on?
Right.
But I agree hundred percent.
Yeah, and our, and the, the size of our detachment is huge, like it goes from chapel to. So there's gonna be quite a bit of expenses there. And then if the board decides that they're going to fund all of the travel expenses, well, that's still gonna split by all of the councillors. And what if our council decides that we always attend virtually except once a year? To mean, to limit costs, but then we're still paying, like it's, like we have no control over how it's going to affect our bottom line, so. Yeah, so are you capturing some of this, Eileen?
I am, and I was just going to suggest that council can also email their feedback to me if they'd like by Monday, if they wanted to, by February twelfth. Or I can just, I've taken a few notes and I can submit that as well.
Okay, well, why don't we, council, I'm gonna shorten that up. If you have comments, please get them to Eileen by Friday. Because I, I don't want her rushing to get it in for the thirteenth on Monday, she comes in to work Monday and then she can have the comments and get on it. I think it's very important and because it is going to affect our tax dollars and we're seeing it at budget time. We need our money to spend in our community. We cannot be spending it on provincial stuff. It's a service that they offer to the communities, OPP, and I think this should be covered under their budget, not ours.
I agree.
So, so you have until Friday at, we'll put it right to four o'clock. By my means, to email further, I would suggest you all really look at this. Because I'm just seeing it, I went through it and there, you might find other things, and you've all sat on different boards, so something else might pop out to you that is going to create an expense. So. Okay, and I do, do I need a motion for this one? I defer through you to Jen.
Yes, there's one which is be it resolved that council does hereby direct the CAO clerk to submit feedback on item ten point four, regulations for Ontario provincial police, OPP tax report, ask for council discussion.
Okay. Okay, you heard Jen put that motion, I'll read it again though, if I can get a mover in a second or please. Move by councillor Jerus, second by councillor Ted Schenman. Be it resolved that council does hereby direct the CAO clerk to submit feedback on Ministry of the Solicitor General OPP detachment or description update. As per council discussion. Those in favor? And that is carried. I think I read that a bit different from yours, and I am sorry.
It's okay, I put the topics on here just so it was easier.
Okay, okay. Okay, ten point five is rural development. Rural economic development? And did you wanna speak to this, Emma?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to advise council that the EDO will be providing her comments online for this. For the rural economic development strategy as they're looking for feedback on that. And there isn't deadline stated or shown for the online submission. And that's all I had to for that.
Okay, and these further discussions from council, why not the rural economic development?
Madam.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm here to see you, I mean, so is that different than, it says it's open from now until February twenty first?
Oh, that's the application program, sorry, Eileen, I jumped in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's talking about two different things. So the rural economic development, the red program, that's an application program. And then it's talking further about the consultations down lower. And.
It's right here, it's all night.
Thank you.
So I'm taking it that the economic development officer is just using our, where we want to move our community and submitting comments? Or are we going to see the comments that she submitted on?
She said she would just submit it right through the, that link there.
Yeah.
But it has to do with the, because I believe they're looking. Yeah, thoughts, experience, ideas to define the opportunities and help inform a strategy that will support the economic prosperity of small towns and villages across the province. And so that's what she'll be providing input on.
Okay, would we be able to have her, her inclusion on her next report? Of her comments, like whatever she submitted?
Yeah, or it can go on as info only as well, just.
Yeah, for sure, either way.
Yeah.
You give it that council?
Yeah.
And you are all able to submit on your own as well? Is this something that we wanna submit as a group as well? I'm not seeing any movement on that. And I need a motion for ten point five?
Yeah, that, this will just be to receive this.
Information? Okay, if I get a mover in a second or to receive this information for ten point five, move by councillor Ted Schenman, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council does receive item ten point five. Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, Rural Economic Development as information. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, item number ten point six is a phenomenon, it's a support resolution, we talked about this lots, about the several liability across the province. If I can get a mover in a second or move by councillor Dragos, second by councillor Ted Schenman. Whereas many municipalities in Ontario have seen an increase for their insurance rate due to joint and several liability. And whereas in twenty fifteen, the city of Greater Sudbury, the city entered into a contract with the contractor experienced in road construction projects to complete a project on Eldon Street in the city's downtown core. And whereas the contract provided that the contractor would be the constructor for the project as that term is defined in the Occupational Health and Safety Act, the act. And whereas an employee of the constructor operating greater on the project struck and struck and killed a pedestrian. And whereas the city was charged with offenses under the act as the constructor and the employee. And whereas after being acquitted at trial and on appeal, the Ontario Court of Appeal in a decision issued on April twenty third, twenty twenty one, found that the city to be liable for contraventions of the construction regulations as an employer. As it employed quality control inspectors to monitor the quality of the work on the project from time to time. And whereas the Supreme Court of Canada in a decision issued on November tenth, twenty twenty three, was evenly divided four-four on the issue, resulting in dismissal of the city's appeal. And whereas the consequence of this, this decision is that municipalities in Ontario. And whereas the consequence of this, this decision is that municipalities in Ontario, as well as. All other owners of property in the province who wish to undertake construction are subject to being charged and convicted as an employer for offenses in relation to project sites. For which they have no control and have, in accordance with the act, contradicted. Contracted with an entity to assume planetary oversight and authority over the work on such site as the constructor. And whereas the potential of an owner being charged as an employer, as that term is defined in the act, in circumstances where it has engaged a constructor. Disregards. And renders meaningless the owner constructor provisions contained in the act. And presents an unacceptable level of increased risk and confusion for owners and contractors throughout the province. Whereas council believes that the safety of workers is paramount, however, the safety of workers on construction projects in Ontario. Is not increased by placing liabilities on parties that do not have control of and are not responsible for the conduct of work on such site. Therefore, be it resolved that council, corporation, the township of Hornfield, does hereby request that the province amend. The Occupational Health and Safety Act to clarify the definition of employer to exclude owners that have contracted with a constructor for a project. Be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to Honorable Doug Corr, Premier of Ontario. The Honorable David Tuchin, Minister of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development. The Honorable Paul Kalander, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Fran Jelena's, MPP for Nickelbell, Jamie West, MPP for Sudbury. The Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities. Ontario's big city mayors and regional chairs of Ontario, Northern Ontario large urban mayors. This council's Ontario Construction Associations and the Ontario Chamber of Commerce with coffee to the city of Greater Sudbury. Okay, comment on that motion? Councillor Drago.
Yeah, dear ma'am, I followed this case very closely, very closely, because there was death involved and, uh, we have a lot of contractors, our small community. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming strongly that was a very expensive proposition to go into the court costs. And I think that's one of the best amendments for health and safety. Especially for small communities who cannot afford, number one. To have an extra supervisor watching a contractor come in. That should be their role. And I think hopefully this will pass and be changed. This is really crucial. I mean, that was death involved. That was serious matter. And, uh, I am glad it was brought up.
Thank you, councillor Drago. Councillor Peter Kissmaker.
I agree with what you said, uh, councillor Stanek. That being said, from a death personally, my own family. Uh, if it wasn't for this law, the way it was, the way it stands now. Not only would the family have not gotten something from a wrongful death suit. Contractors will always go, being, coming from a personal experience, I, I was a contractor one time. You try to do it as cheap and as efficient as possible. And human nature is you always try to go towards, you take the, um. Sometimes safety does take a sideline to profit. And that could be in the terms of, uh. How efficient you are in the timelines, you're doing it, trying to beat the, you know whatnot. Without the oversight and the onus being on the municipality or the city that's involved in, uh, rendering these contracts for the contractors. Handing them out. It's, it will be the Wild West, and if there is no policing involved, we are opening Pandora's box and I believe it will get a lot worse. So yes, I don't like it. I totally agree with you, Drago. It's very costly for taxpayers when it's not their fault. But if you don't have oversight. There and you don't have a thing, it's like we have, us personally, all five of us at this table. Are, are legally bound to say the water regulations if we take shortcuts. There's connections to the people that are issuing the contracts and the oversight committees and whatnot, only because. It's human nature to take shortcuts and safety never, I don't want to be like, say a slogan, but safety doesn't take a break. And it will always take a sideline to money. And we need that oversight. So I strongly, as much as I agree with you and I feel for you on the one side, I would totally disagree with this change.
Okay, yes, councillor. Any further comments on this? Councillor Gordon Kissmaker.
I totally disagree with this. I, I, I won't agree with that, to put it through.
Okay.
Basically, we all have a responsibility when it comes to safety and, uh. No, and even municipalities. And when you get sued. Yours, everyone sues you. So i- i- it's, it's a chain reaction when, uh, someone gets, someone dies. And I've gone through this before, is you're sued by everybody, and that has to go through the process. And even for the insurance, you're talking about the insurance rates, it's not going to make a difference.
Councillor Peter Kissmaker.
To add to that was in my own personal, um, experience and with my own family. If it, if this law was amended to what the proposal now. My family member that lost an individual would not have been compensated because the contractor that was. Contracted over by the city to do that project that the accident happened. That family wouldn't have got anything.
Okay.
Because there was no money. So that's what I mean, like that's where the oversight comes into, like there's got to be connection where there's accountability or right to the top.
Okay, so let's, let's clarify it just, uh, and take, um. Uh, I'm just gonna put a couple scenarios first, okay? So in this, where they were found guilty, is this was a contractor that struck a pedestrian. Um, and they were contracted to do work. In another case, there was a contractor that, um, fatally injured a city employee. Very different.
Yep.
So this, um. I don't think this change would affect what happened in that situation. I think we need to look at that as different because this is talking about pedestrians, this is talking about, I am in, highly in favor of this. Because this is an example, is any work that we get done in our municipality. We are going to have to oversee it completely because we will be liable for anything they do. So if they're not showing up with BPE, whatever, it could come back on us that we're not policing them and we do not have the staff to police it. So I, um, we've discussed this at length, that different boards I sit on. And my concern about this resolution or motion was. That we're telling them to amend for the employer act, I think it needs to be completely looked at to protect municipalities. I think there's more, there could be more neutrals in this legislation where people can still come after municipalities.
Well, they won't.
Because my thing is if you hire somebody to do the work. You've asked for liability, they carry all of that. Why does it come back on us? And you should be following all the standards. So, go ahead.
When you're, when you're, um. As a municipality or even an employer, when someone is doing a job for you. You're automatically asking that contractor for all the documentation that shows that they have WSIV coverage. They have the right amount of insurance coverage. They have, um, they've gone through, uh, um, safety training, the whole works, it's all documented and they have to improve that documentation. So you are covering yourself there. But what I do know is when something does happen, it doesn't matter. You will all get sued.
Yes, but this is what the change in the, the legislation is to protect. Is so we do our due diligence, we hire a contractor, we do all of those things and as long as we've done them all. And they, and we have the safety standards, what have you, then we're protected. That's where the wall goes up. It becomes there. And then we don't have to oversee it, we don't have to babysit, we don't. And we don't have the staff for that anyway. Like it's one thing to have a couple of questions or what have you.
Yeah.
Councillor Drago.
Might take it different altogether. Let's go in the future, next year, the third avenue. I'll give you a drawing picture. Contractor A comes in with employees, equipment. Their personal protection. It is their show. We are not, right now, we're having Sudbury. The contractor said to the city, you're partly responsible, you should have been supervising us. Bad idea. With new legislation. They are to provide no supervisors, quality control on the job. They have all the liability, but this is above and beyond. So if an accident occurs, they are going to be responsible, not 100%. We, we're going to be sued, there's no question. However, the onus is will be on the contractor, not the municipality, because it'll be legislation. Right now it's Wild West because this, because I follow this and they said. The lawyers for the contractors said, oh, they're responsible, it was their street we're working on. But they forgot to put, uh, snow fencing, they forgot to put cones, and that's what, a person just walked through a work site which wasn't. Encased, covered. So there, therefore, when these people come in, they have their own quality control. We have no staff to spend eighteen, twelve hours in summertime. And plus we don't have expertise to make sure they follow all the rules.
Yeah, like the, yes, no matter what. I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of tune. What, when, no matter what, what happens is. You're going to take someone like, uh, uh, Public Works Manager. They are going to have to follow up that those people are doing their jobs. Because if they don't, you're still going to be in trouble.
No question, but the onus with this.
And you still have the opportunity to be sued.
Right, but. The, in this, with the way this is set up. The Public Works Manager goes to the person that's in charge of the project. He doesn't talk to men and women on the project. No, no, that's what they, the city Sudbury wanted, the city, no, he talks to the person that's in charge. And when he has a problem, he'll tell the person in charge, not the person, the operator and the greater, we're back. This is what they're saying. He still looks at the project, yes, no question. If he sees gross negligence, that's his response. But the onus will be on the contractor A, B, C, or D, and that's where they're trying to drive home. And Sudbury didn't happen. They blamed the city, that they felt the city should have had, uh, quality control, safety control, they weren't all the staff. That's why I agree with this.
So what you're saying is this thing is saying that. Um. Because municipalities do not want the, uh, liability. That no matter what, they just hired a contractor and then the contractor is going to do his, going to be responsible for it all. But I don't see the difference. Well, because in the sense that the employer in this case, so what they're trying to distinguish is the employer. So the city became the employer. When it was the contractor's employee who, that ended up creating the fatality. And it wasn't the city employee. So now when you look at all of the different avenues of. Because look at the process we do when we hire employees. Look at what we have in place for our employees. Now you're going to open it up that all of those contractors are, fall under your employeeship. Like you're, I don't even know if that's word, you're as an employee.
Yes.
So you're going to, so. Like, it, it's like, we don't even know their hiring processes. What did they put them through? How, would we have hired them? Would they have been on our back? Oh, like, I don't know. And this is where there's, it creates a divide, that there's, this is the entity that hires. Isn't the employer of those contract, of the contracted employees. Does that make sense to you?
Not really.
Okay, no, well, what's, yeah, no, what we can do is I am going to have good roads meetings. And I deal with experts in this, we've had a discussion on it. So we can, uh, put a motion to defer this item until March 6th. And when I come back, I can, I'm sure I have reports and stuff that I can forward to Eileen. I'll, uh, talk to the folks there and there's. Why this is important for municipalities. Sound good?
Yeah, I'll just give you another example. When we did the arena roof. 1988, 89. We hired the company from Cochrane. The person came in with his bid in, if they were the lowest bid. Then the project manager said, I was director of parks, and I said, let me, you made all the rules. He's in charge of employees on the roof, not me, and, but in Sudbury, this company wanted the Sudbury. CEO and parks manager and to be in charge of employees that doesn't have a clue who they are. So in, in that case, it's arena, it was 100% the person who was in charge of employees for their safety, equipment they use, not us. So we were not, we, it could be some, yes, but the responsibility.
The only thing is, I have seen where an occupational health and safety inspector has come in. And he has said, I don't like what you're doing. Okay, I haven't seen, I have heard, I should specify that. And what he did was, he picked somebody that was standing there and made him in charge. And it wasn't any of those guys to do with any of them employees. So how do you handle that one?
I'm not sure, that might be out of this, uh, context. Councillor Peter Kissmaker?
And two things, one was, uh, you mentioned about two different apples and oranges, and I'd just like to go back and I'm not going to make an argument or nothing.
No.
It's apples, apples, I'm, in my mind. Because if it would have happened to a, a citizen, not an employee, the end result still would have been the same. And now by redefining the definition of employer by handing off, are we giving up the right for Mr. Boudreaux here? To go up and say, hey, you're breaking the law, you're doing whatever, because if you are no longer. Responsible for those or liable for any, um. Bad actions, unsafe actions from the contractor that you have working, you are also taking away the authority to say, you're doing it wrong.
No, I don't think so. I totally disagree.
See, that's where you're mixing the lines, where it's.
Because reasonable.
Sorry. The public works manager would still have the authority over the contract head, whoever that is, whatever significance, the supervisor, whatever. Um, in no case should you be, um, correcting employees that aren't yours anyway. But they should be going, hey, there's unsafe stuff, or just a stop action, if it's so unsafe, hey, just stop. Everything, and I'm going to go talk to whoever, right? Like, I don't know the details of how that would all be dealt with. But no, that's, because that would still be in your contract, that they would have to follow whatever legislation, safe work environment, all of that. And if we, especially if it's right up the third avenue, we see that, well, we can't just neglect.
Yeah.
Neglect it, right? Like that's, so, we're having quite the debate over this, councillor Drago Stanek.
Final comment. Do you remember when the OPP office was built?
Uh, yes.
Do you remember the death that occurred?
Yes.
Case in point. It was responsibility to employer, not going into specifics, but employer, person backed out of the.
Yes.
Trailer. Killed.
Yeah.
So it wasn't the OPP con, uh, OPP Corporation, it was the employer that was responsible for that death. Matter of fact, the reason I know, because the judge had his, uh, chambers, read it, counsel chambers here. It was in his major for about two weeks.
Okay.
And that's how it was found. I remember that very clearly. So it wasn't, um.
That was a terrible time, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Kissmaker, go ahead.
What I, again, and I'm, I'm. I'm jaded when it comes to this stuff. Uh, I'm just scared of, and not by any talent we know of and anybody here or whatnot. It's just, I just hate the idea of handing things off and putting the onus on someone other than the person writing the check. And, uh, so that's where I stand and I, I, my mind won't change on that. I just. And I agree with what everybody's saying, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. It's just, uh. When it hits home, it really hits home and then, and then, then you could, you could say, I can listen to reason and it. And you guys are very valid points and, and I agree 100%. But I'm just always worried for those, if shortcuts can be taken, they will, and, um. I don't, yeah, if it wasn't for the laws that are in place right now. And, and, and nine times out of 10, when there's a tragedy that happens, doesn't necessarily have to be a death, but you know, like, uh. An injury causing the person not to be able to work again or whatever. It's usually because the laws were already in place, they're just weren't being followed.
But do you think it might create, and I'll close with this statement. Um, and we can put the motion to defer, but do you think it might create actually better workplace environments with contractors? Because you're saying that people, you know, cut different places. Apparently, safety first, to save the, save the bottom line.
Yep.
Well, it's not us doing that, and it would be our contractors doing that. And then we have to foot the bill if they cut, injure somebody. Or, you know, in this case, fatality happens. And it was their decision-making, do you see where I'm getting at? And that comes back onto us when we're trying to have a higher standard. Like, so, I, I do think, so I've got it written on the motion that, uh, be it resolved that council does hereby defer number 10.6. Phenom, uh, sorry. Phenom amendment to the Occupational Health and Safety Act to clarify the definition of employer to the March 6th, 2024 council meeting. And, uh. Are we in favor of that? I'm going to move in a seconder, so moved by. In a second, or, so moved by Counselor Ted Chenman, second by Counselor Bolinda Kissmaker. And is that carried? Carried?
Yep.
And I will get, um, further information, because I know we have reports on this, of how it can affect municipalities. Certainly. Okay?
That's good.
Okay. And I have to say, I have to read the full motion again, you know, again, again.
Sorry.
Thanks, guys.
Just a weak.
No, it was good conversation.
Yeah.
And good discussion. Okay, moving on to, uh, correspondence information, only if I can get a mover and a seconder to open the floor. Moved by Counselor Peter Kissmaker, second by Counselor Ted Chenman. Be resolved at council corporation, township, foreign pain does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-four. And, uh, Eileen, you have, you want to speak to an item?
I wanted to speak to, uh, item eleven point four, which was the Terrace Bay Letters of Support. Um, I just wanted to mention to council that we did get an update from TV DML, um, that the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry had actually reached out, um, to, to, um, to TV DML, uh, to, uh, once they had sent their letter, they had reached out and, um, want to set up a meeting to discuss further.
Okay, and just while we're on that topic, I did have a meeting on Monday with the Minister of Forestry and the Mayor of Chapel, and the Mayor of Duberville, myself, and two counselors from White River, where we just discussed these topics, the fallout of, um, the closures of not only Terrace Bay, but of Espinola, and what we can do, um, what are they doing, we need to get out of the boom bus cycle of Northern Ontario, like, this really needs to stop. We need to find strategies, and if we can't save it this time, what can we do next time? Like, we gotta get, but literally, it needs to reopen.
Absolutely.
Um, and the other item that we did discuss at that time too was, uh, forest fires, the upcoming forest fire season, that it's quite dry, and there's no snow, and, um, yeah.
Yeah.
That's something, yeah.
So just, uh, just to follow up on that eleven point four, any other discussion items from council on information only? Okay, there being none, I put the acknowledged receipt to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, so moving on to item twelve, committee and board updates. Just before I go to twelve point one, we do have an announcement that our CDAC committee is meeting for the first time on February the thirteenth at seven P M, so that's good, and we have Counselor Drago Stavakis and Counselor Ted Chenman on that, so. Have a good meeting, I am gonna pop in for a few minutes.
It'll be adventurous meeting. You told us to use the term, right?
I wanna see how you're making, how you're incorporating it into your meeting procedure.
Started now.
Oh, God. Hold to see.
There we go.
Okay, well, I wish you both a good meeting.
Okay. Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Since you brought up the committees, I was actually wondering, so we are having a meeting, so we're starting with the other committee?
Uh, defer to Eileen.
We haven't had anybody, uh, submit any applications for it.
Okay.
So it's, it's just up there, waiting to be joined.
Okay, okay, and we're looking for two members for that, or three?
Four.
Four members?
For that, okay.
Okay, putting a shout out there. Operational Advisory Committee is up for grabs, we need four community members. And this is advisory services directly related to your municipal operations. Can I further add? For all of those enthusiastic community members, this would be your opportunity to get involved. Okay, item twelve point one, uh, mayor's meetings. If I need a mover and a seconder, please, moved by Counselor Drago Stavakis, second by Counselor Peter Kissmaker, be it resolved at council this year by acknowledged receipt of mayor meetings, January twenty twenty-four, prepared by Mayor Cheryl Ford. I do want to highlight on the mayor's meeting list that I did put my resignation in as the Vice President of NIOA. I had come to this decision in December, because we have, as you know, counsel, I've said that I would really like to focus on finding investment opportunities for our committee, our community, and I felt that that association needs somebody that's more committed, there's lots of work that needs to be done in that area. And that was, um, where I had come to that, uh, resolution on my own, back in December, and I did reach out to the Vice Presi, or the President, Pierre Polites, back into the beginning of January, to tell him my resignation will be coming. Unfortunately, the meeting got canceled for February the ninth, and it's moved to March, but it's still sitting on the agenda. And so, uh, I still will sit on the association, just, I don't want a leadership role, I don't want to take away from our own municipality, so. And, uh, any questions or comments on meetings? Okay, uh, there being none, I put that to a vote, those in favor to acknowledge, and that is carried. Okay, committee and board meeting minutes. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Ted Chenman, second by Counselor Peter Kissmaker, be it resolved at council corporation, the township, foreign pain does hereby acknowledge receipt of the board and committee meeting minutes attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-four. And we have the a comment on the district, uh, municipal minutes, or the Elderliness Services Administration Board minutes. Okay, there being none. I, I will give a comment though on the ad sub minutes. So I didn't include this on my meeting updates, because I didn't know how to include it. Um, was that we did have an election for Vice Chair, which I have held for a year, and I did put my name in the running again for that position, I was not reelected, Lynn Watson was reelected to that position, he had held it in the past. Um, I'm not disappointed about this, at this venture, because we do, we are looking at some very difficult things at the board, and how the board's funded, and, um, and I don't know if I would wholly represent all of the board members sitting as a Vice Chair, which you should do, and, uh, at this time, I really feel impelled to go after the board, uh, not after the board, I wouldn't want to use that aggressive language, to have, uh, good wholesome discussions on our service levels in our area. And we have already, as you know, I had already brought forward about the, um, service delivery review for the north end of, which, uh, was not well received at the board level, and at the administration level, so we still have work to do, because we're just, we're not seeing services, and and I am trying to create a win-win, I do have a good working relationship with both Norman and Keith, but, um, it's just trying to really get them to see our struggles at the northwest end of the district, so. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I read, and it's, and I noticed that you brought that up, but I'm one administrator, and I don't know the names, but they said there's gonna, there's another strategic study being done, they're waiting for that, and then they're gonna look at the issues you brought up, that's where I get from this, uh, correct.
Yeah, there's an, already an internal service delivery review that happens, but that doesn't encompass the issues that we're finding, right? And we do have the wholesome meeting on the twenty-second. Um, and I did get further documentations to understand all of this in the background, so you saw that.
All right, I read all.
But anyway, so it's not that I'm not committed to the board, I just think at this time, it, uh, it, it's a good position to be in, so.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on those minutes? Okay, there being none, I put that to acknowledged receipt, to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to, uh, thirteen point one. This is, okay, I'm gonna push through, council, usually we take a break at this time, but I'm gonna push through tonight, because we only have the one item. Okay, so, any questions for the C A O on the C A O's report?
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Eileen Airport, are you, uh, I think twelve point three, I didn't miss.
Council Committee. Oh, yeah, I don't want to hear from you.
Just because you left the light there, stop.
Thank you so much, Eileen. You're getting thank yous and not so much thank yous across the board here. Okay, council committee update, sorry about that, council, I totally bypassed, I like how none of you piped up. Well, let's spot that out, oh, gosh. Is this what you call adventure, Drago? Okay.
Mismanaged adventure.
Mismanaged adventure. I was over here to counsel Ted, our Counselor Ted.
Nothing, nothing to update it or report to.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Peter Kissmaker.
Nothing updated this morning.
Nothing, okay.
I don't have anything.
No, yes, I'll do it real quick. PHU meeting, January twenty-fifth, uh, was lengthy meeting, we had training, we had, uh, elections, we had the budget. Um, the budget came in fifty percent, fifteen percent, was not accepted by me, we had a massive discussion, and I could not, in my mind, come to council to be fifteen. Uh, we brought it down to ten percent, as I mentioned, that the, and I thought that was feasible, that five percent were taken away from, uh, PHU from every reserve funds.
Okay.
But it was, um, lively discussion.
Thank you for the update.
Um, humbled to be Vice Chair again. I didn't want it, but I, I am humbled. And I'm also on the Finance Committee as well again. And I mentioned you have the last meeting, the merging team, uh, four members, uh, from Workman Health Unit, four members, the Mexican Health Unit, will get together, and, um, the people on our, uh, board, put their names in, uh, last, last Thursday at twelve o'clock, and the people that chose the, selected the people that do be on a merger board for PHU, were done by Michelle Balow, the mayor, she's the chair, and Dr. Kat. I was informed today at four one, I'm one of the members of the mergers committee, merging with Sue Perez, who's a provincial appointee, and Tori, who's the mayor from Mary Pappals.
Okay.
And plus Michelle. Our first meeting occurs February twelfth, uh, virtual course from three to four P M.
Okay, great, I'm glad to hear you're on the merging.
I'm pleased with that.
Thank you for putting your name forward, that was a volunteer to put your name forward first.
And then they chose you.
Oh, thank you for that.
I, I like to be part of the pulse.
No, but that's a, gonna be huge, it just grows the, just, or the health unit that much bigger, right? And so we're gonna be at the far end of a bigger health unit.
We have to do a real, real quality map, where we're heading, plan of strategy. Also, I'll be taking it through PHU, eight week course, Ontario Indigenous Cultural Training, uh, through PHU.
Okay.
There was a member we took, and she spoke very highly of it, and that'll be covered financially by the PHU. Other people know how it goes, and the administration will be registering me with it next week.
And what, what type of course is it, Drago? Was it in person, or?
No, virtual, virtual, yeah.
Once a week, or?
Yeah, once a week, but it has to be continuous, you can't send it.
Okay.
But you have a timeframe, I, I'm not sure all the ramifications, but you have forty-four hours to complete, well, I'm, I'm not sure what the rules are, but uh, the person, uh, the new onboard member, she spoke very highly of the program, so, I'll share with the council when I get.
Yeah, could you share the link, because we're actually looking for that at ad sub.
Yeah, as soon as I get the information.
Okay, thank you.
And we had a very productive lobby board meeting on Monday. I was very pleased with some of the stuff. We discussed, and, uh, yes, CDAC is happening with Counselor Ted and I on the thirteen, seven P M. Adventure, here we come. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, council, for all of your updates. Now, moving on to, uh, thirteen point one. And, uh, Eileen, did you want to speak to your report first, or?
I, I don't have anything further to add to my report, um. I tried to add as much information as I could find, it was very hard, I know one of council's requests was to bring back kind of the ETA for the steps within the process, but I, I did quite a bit of research, and I couldn't find like exact timelines, other than it takes years. Um, so I can answer any questions, or try to answer any questions from council, otherwise.
Any comments from the council, any questions? From my perspective, I think this is something that we should do. I don't think the timing of it is right, as of right now. Uh, staff has many things that we're dealing with, and, um, things on the go. And I think this is something that needs to be started and start finished, we already have the first public, like, um, that they want to do this, we did the survey, yes, it needs to be done, it's not within our current strategic plan. I would suggest that we, it's one of those items that, um, we should look at, possibly near the end of next year, or the, or our final year of council, and get it started, because it will go through a couple of councils, I think.
Yep.
From start to finish. And, um, that's my only discussion point on that. Any further comments on that? Okay, there being none. If you can get a mover and a seconder to acknowledge receipt. Moved by Counselor Peter Kissmaker, second by Counselor Ted Chenman, be it resolved at council this year by acknowledged receipt of C A O S R twenty twenty-four dash two railway whistle sensation process report as provided by Eileen Singh, C A O clerk. Those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, uh, moving on to bylaws procurement, and, um, I think we have some discussion on this, Eileen?
Uh, yeah, so the reason why this, uh, bylaw is on the agenda and back to council, we, we are now using canoe procurement, which is a, which is cooperative purchasing. Um, so we needed to make changes to the procedural, um, and so, uh, I'm sorry, not the procedural, the procurement bylaw, and we've added a definition of cooperative purchasing in the bylaw, and we've also added uh, the cooperative purchasing clause, and I'll just get, um, the deputy clerk to go through the changes, um, which should council want.
Would you like to walk through the changes, council?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, huh?
So there are only three changes. Uh, on page two, the term cooperative purchasing is added to definitions, and the definition is also added. And then on page five, five point eight point one and five point eight point two, which are just uh, outlining the processes for cooperative purchasing, with other governmental or public sector entities, uh, which would in this case include a new program, uh, and those just outline the requirements, process, all of that. Uh, and that's the only two changes.
Okay, any further questions on the bylaw, council? Okay, I'm gonna put the bylaw up for a vote with the first, second, and third time reading, so if I can get a mover and a seconder, please, moved by Counselor Ted Chenman, second by Counselor Peter Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty fifty-six being a bylaw to establish the authority and set up the methods by which goods, services, equipment, or construction will be purchased and disposed of for the township of Horn Pain. Be hereby read first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any further comments on that bylaw? There being none, I put it to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to item fifteen, motions, notice of motion, there's none. Sixteen adjournment, confirmatory, please, moved by Counselor Drago Stavakis, second by Counselor Ted Chenman. Be resolved the bylaw number twenty fifty-seven being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-four. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried, and adjournment, moved by Counselor Bolinda Kissmaker, second by Counselor Ted Chenman, be it resolved at council this year by adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-four at eight oh eight P M, those in favor? And that is carried. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.